What's that? Oh, no, I'm tired of eating and smoking. Terrible out here. Valley's been on fire for days. Hey, it's night off. Please join me in flag eloping. My pleasure to lead this in flag of the United States of America and Integra Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in His temple. Morning. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from last week's meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the last two meetings.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Bailey. Mr. Bailey was so gracious this morning that I got a call late last week that we had to fill a radio spot, so I dragged Eric up to the radio station this morning.
Good.
All right, first off, we got a culvert permit that's completed. It's for Kyle and Jamie Brown. I'll get the address there, but it is completed. Couple other items to hand out here. Commissioner Harris had asked about 250th and Deer, the low water crossing, ask if I would get with Frank Young and see if we could kind of get an estimate or just a rough ballpark figure. I do have that information, so hand that out to you. Estimated total project cost to put box culverts in there is $185,000 is what the estimate was.
Thank you, sir.
Just kind of. So you have it. Have it there. Second piece of paper here, I'll hand this out and then we can discuss this at another meeting or if you want to have a discussion, whatever you want to do, but this one here is on Elm Creek Lake, the drilling that they've done out there, trying to find the leak or the seam or what have you, so here's their findings on that as well.
You want to discuss this in this little bit for?
We can, if you want to discuss it, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to. Thank you, Eric, for getting this information for us, because I had a request from a property owner in that area, if we can make any changes to that low water crossing at 250th and Deer, going east on Deer. And certainly looking at these estimates, and even with the 10-year storm, it's going to go over the road with the new bridge, so even if we could avoid it, it looked like a 25-year storm, it's still going to top the road 1.3 feet, so that's a lot of water. So I guess my comments, I'll visit with the property owner, or you can, it's your choice, whatever you want.
However.
And just tell them we can't do this.
Okay.
$185,000 is too much money, because there's one house on that road. And they do have an alternate route, they can go east on Deer and north on 260th and hit the blacktop there on Eagle.
I think yes.
Highville Road, so they do have a chance. So thank you for getting this, but we can't afford $185,000.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Yep. Kind of give you a rundown, we are scheduled for March 16th to do a blast at Beth query. That's all lined out and ready to go. They're currently up there drilling now for the blast. So we are moving forward with that. Had a little issue with the crusher last week, broke some springs on the screen, we're down for a day and a half. Got screens, I think we broke two, there's like seven of them total, or seven or nine. I just went ahead and had them replace all of them, so that way if two broke, I'm sure there's others that was getting close to having some wear and tear and not knowing for sure when they might break, so we just went ahead and replaced them all, so.
That's good.
We are back up crushing, crusher's running very well and producing road rock and getting the road rock back out and on the roads. We kind of divided the trucks, we're taking one truck and going to a different grade or each grade or trying to get more in their areas and then we'll combine back here once we get some hot spots taken care of, so kind of let you know there. Dump trucks, I'm happy to say we have all of our dump trucks back and in service and they've all been repaired with the hydraulic issues and appear to be working very well. The first one, we got to actually run it during the storm and it worked wonderful, so the other two have been, same thing has been done to them, so just let you know that we now have all of our trucks back. I went and picked the other one up yesterday, so we have all five back in service. Roadside mowing, we're working on the north central part of the county. Once we kind of finish that area up pretty well from last year up to now, we'll pretty well have everything in the county hit once. So then, you know, spring's here and it's time to go again and we'll be mowing again, so, or starting all over again, so just kind of giving you a heads up there.
Eric?
Yes.
Do you, are you thinking about replacing a Ford tractor or are you going to do a three?
We've taken the Ford over to, I couldn't find any paperwork on exactly what was wrong with the one Ford tractor. It went to be sold on Purple Wave or what have you and there's something about it wasn't a disclaimer, I don't know the whole situation, anyhow we ended up with it back.
Right.
So it's on its way to R and R, they're going to test us, give us something if it's, what's wrong with it exactly if they can, and then we'll be able to make a decision whether we want to replace or whether we want to use it or what exactly we want to do with the machine.
So we know what year that tractor is?
I'm not for sure, I think it was a KDOT.
KDOT tractor?
Yeah, we bought it from the KDOT on the freeway up there, one of those. Now, at that time, when we shut it down, either R and R or S and H, one of them told us we had a cracked block.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if that's changed, I wouldn't know why, but.
Yeah, I don't know either, but I can't find anything that says that 100% that that's what it is, so we'll run that through and get a report on it, have some documentation with it and then we'll move forward.
Good.
And get to going with that, but I definitely think we could use that, either that tractor or another tractor just like it, to try and keep up with the mowing.
It's a chore to keep up.
Yes, yes. Noxious weed department is getting ready to start putting down some pre-emergent around our bridges and what have you, so just giving you a heads up on that. Let's see, bridges, last week, 125th, on Xavier between 125th and 130th, they cleaned out the logs and debris on each side of that bridge. I think they had several dump truck loads of brush and logs and debris that they hauled out of that one. Then they went to 215th and Xavier, done the exact same thing there, cleaned out on each side of that. And now today, or yesterday, they're working over on 260th and Indian. On the northeast and the southeast corners are some undermining, we're going to fill that in with some flammable fill and then maybe concrete over the top of that, or put some rock in there and concrete over the top to hold the rocks in place and move forward with that. We are producing, fired up the asphalt plant today, the city's needing a little asphalt to do some patching from all the utility cuts and what have you that they experienced with the storm and the water leak, so our asphalt plant is running today and it's up and going right as we speak now, so it's kind of where we're at there. Jayhawk Wind, did have a meeting with Jayhawk Wind Friday, I don't know if Justin is here or whether he's, he was on Zoom or virtual, I actually went down to Gerard. They have presented us with their road plan. I am reviewing the road plan, have made a call to Frank Young when I get done with my part of the reviewing of it and my questions and what have you, have set up with Frank for next week to have him look over everything and so we are moving forward with that.
And Commissioner, just a quick side note on this, the clock starts ticking on February 26th, so 45 days from February 26th, they have to have the pilot money to you all, so that should be coming by the, you know, first part of April. But the clock did start and they informed us that the clock is starting, so I know that was important for a possible bridge project.
All right. And Commissioner Harris, you asked me to remind you about a meeting with TNC.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
TNC requested that Eric and I meet with them later this week or possibly next week to talk about their road in front of their nice laws down there, so I would like to get permission from the other two commissioners for me to join Eric. I don't have a day set yet, but I'd like to get permission for Eric and I go down and meet with them.
Amen.
Anyone want to make a motion for that?
Can.
Motion for Mr. Harris to join Eric on a meeting with TNC in the next couple of weeks.
Second, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, thank you.
Yep, yep.
I'll let you know.
You'll let me know on that and we'll go from there?
Yeah.
And then I did get your crossroad culverts down at Garland or what have you, that's on the list, so we will be working on that along with several others.
And you have missed Albright's on your list?
Yes, yes, it was already on the list. They ran short on culverts last year, so we just got our shipment in here this past week, past couple of weeks, we've got two shipments in, but anyhow.
She was real nice, just wanted us to come back.
And we do, I looked at it yesterday, we do need to finish that project and it will definitely help by getting that crossroad.
Now, you can tell you just run out of culvert, I mean, it's almost done, so.
Yes, absolutely, so. Anything for me from?
Well, we made a discovery last week on Unity and 105th. They will be going to go up and replace a bridge, and that's out of my area. I remember years ago that they said this road was closed and hadn't been maintained forever, so they backed off and took it to check it out and I'll be here, it is an open road.
Yeah, so.
To nowhere.
We will be back to, that was on our bridge report, that's the reason we were up there looking at the bridge. It was on the bridge report that needed some attention, so we will be getting it back on our list and getting up to get the debris and what have you cleaned out from underneath, and there's a couple of other things that need to be done on it, so.
I think it's 115th.
Is that what, I don't remember to be honest.
Yeah, 115th.
We've talked so many bridges the last few days.
Yeah, see, this shows a no road going that way.
Yeah, there's a.
Laura said that it is.
Little bridge right there.
Check it out.
That is open, that little.
It is.
It is, like just to the other side of the bridge or what have you, so.
Just past the bridge.
That's interesting.
Yeah, it is.
I'm not surprised.
Right.
There's not much of a bridge there.
No.
But it's old.
Right, and we do need to get things cleaned out from underneath it so water can pass through, so. Anybody else, anything for me?
Did you say one of them that we looked at last week was off about 120th and Kansas Road? Where we had a report of the road was terribly muddy, and I think we may have had a discussion whether or not that was one of those cable cuts was when they put in the fiber.
Right.
Can you check that one out?
I think they went ahead and we rocked that area. I think what might have happened was their spoils from when they'd done their trenching were on the side or what have you because they were out in part of the road, then when the grader went through, it got some of the spoils in there and then it went across the road and then we have dirt across the road, so we went ahead and added some gravel.
I think we're getting close to taking care of all those.
Yes.
Good. I know it's kind of a mess.
Right.
I will say that I drove several roads last week and they look great in District Two, so thank you.
Yep, and I'll thank the guys, they're doing a.
They look good.
Great job, so. Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything.
While I'm here, real quick, Kendall, I did get your email yesterday, I'll have to look on those roads and get back with you, okay?
Matt, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Great.
Thank you.
Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Committee.
Thank you for having us on the agenda. Matt Gutierrez, Executive Director of the Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission. With me today, Taylor Hoag, our new community liaison, or she's been, what, six months now, so not so new. As you know, we try to come annually, semi-annually to come to the county commission. Some of the new projects that we have going on in Bourbon County that we recently worked with on the RLF with the new meat company that's coming to town, so they're utilizing our revolving loan fund. We currently are working, we're in the middle of the project now with Ace Hardware here in town, and then also, I know last year we had a larger project in Union Town, so what Taylor's position is, is that we were fortunate enough to win a sizable grant during, with the CARES Act from the Economic Development Administration, which created Taylor's position being community liaison. The point of that is for her to get out to the communities, working on some smaller grants, things of that nature that maybe we haven't had the manpower to do in the past, you know, usually we're large infrastructure multimillion dollar grants. This one with Taylor, she's been doing, working with some more community interest with possible essential workers, fire stations, parks, things of that nature, things that we haven't had an opportunity to do. So we've been more aggressive, we, new logo, new website, things like that that she created, has done a great job doing, and now we'll be out and about, you'll see more of us in the communities, hosting more seminars, conferences, things like that, because now fortunately with the CARES Act, we have opportunity to do so. So we partnered with the Kansas Small Business Development Center to offer free QuickBooks training, marketing, things like that to the 12 counties in the city, so you're probably going to see us hop up a little bit more and hopefully, you know, help out the cities as much as we can.
I'm on the Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Committee Board, and I can tell you that this group is very busy, involved, and they take care of quite a few counties. How many counties you already?
Twelve.
Twelve right now, and they've been expanding their territory somewhat, and they do phenomenal job of person the money that they receive from the government.
Yeah, we stay busy.
And CBGD grants.
Yes, we have, with, what they do in the office, we have basically four employees, and it makes for some quick weeks, but no, we're happy to continue to do it, so, and thank you for your membership you continue to pay, so all your cities don't have to worry about it, it's very appreciated, so. But any questions or anything, we're happy to answer, but I know it's kind of a, you know what we do and you see us from time to time, but, and Taylor brought some more information about our revolving loan fund, which, like I mentioned, Bourbon County has utilized it for one project. We still do have some funds on the EDA CARES Act revolving loan fund. They can be as low as 0% interest loans, they are made for, primarily for businesses that were struggling during the pandemic, but also the opportunity for some new businesses that can grow from that, so we still do have some funds available for any businesses that still need a little bit of help. Understand with PPP, EIDL, all that stuff that you're working through, some businesses, there's still a need, some gaps that need filled, and we'll do everything we can to help out.
And our first, our first small business development workshop is on April 7th in Chanute, and if you don't get our newsletter, you can sign up on our new website and that gives you a lot of information every month about what's going on with us.
Like I said, the seminar in Chanute, we're paying for everything, even lunch, so any business that'd like to come and have a free day of learning from the SBA will be happy to cover. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next thing on our agenda is to our hay bids, are we going to take hay bids this year for Elm Creek, and normally we try to bid out of the old landfill.
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Was Eric still here?
Eric's still up there. Any reason we shouldn't take bids at Elm Creek on the hay?
Would you, oh, go ahead, I shouldn't see you sneak back home.
I don't see any reasons not to.
Yeah, I didn't think so either, but I didn't know something changed up there, it was on the agenda to talk about it, so.
What about your land over, used to be the old?
Their west cemetery.
Yes.
We did that last year, and we tried to do the landfill, but there's just too much stuff in there.
Right.
So that didn't work out.
But I would recommend including both of them and get them.
Get some mowed, nothing else, so.
Yeah, and.
Saves us from having to mow them.
And might draw a little money off of it or something.
Pretty substantial bid for last year on Elm Creek Lake.
Right.
You know, the one up the old landfill, don't really produce a lot, but it's, I guess it cleaned off.
Right.
So I entertain a motion to go ahead and bid.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Eric going out for hay bids at Elm Creek Lake and also the old landfill on the west side of Oak Creek Cemetery.
I'm not sure the name.
Oak Grove Cemetery, that's it.
Okay.
Eric, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is this the normal time you usually?
Yeah, Kendall usually takes care of the paperwork and stuff.
Okay, they can come to you, that's fine, that'll work.
Thank you, Eric.
Yep.
Kendall, health insurance.
So you guys agreed last month, I think it was, to take bids on our property and we'll call insurance. Our health insurance, our contract with them will expire at the end of this year. Do you want to put it up for bid for health insurance for next year?
I would entertain a motion for that to.
I make a motion that we add the health insurance to our insurance bidding process.
Eric, second?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The information regarding some insurance, I bring back.
Morning, Bill.
Morning, everyone. Back in '28 was the last time, 2018 was the last time that the bids went out, our presentation regards to the health insurance. At that time, the company from Wall Street from Jefferson City did their presentation, would save the county close to $130,000 compared to, anybody want a copy? $130,000 in savings is quite a bit of money for this community, and I think that possibly, here you go, Mrs. Bancroft, you probably want a copy of this, this is a presentation I put in 2018, for insurance for the county. Like I said, $130,000 for savings for this county is pretty a lot, and I'd ask that you reach out to them and have them come back, they're a broker, so they look for other insurance, just not one, and just kind of go from there. Any questions or anything? This is the breakdown, everything from dental to health to eye vision and so on and so forth. Okay?
So this is somebody that bid a couple of years ago, Bill?
They did a presentation, the information was brought, there was some discussion, I think the Tribune can go back and look at that information that was done. I think somebody was talked out of it, I don't know what the deal was, I'll just leave it at that, and continued with the current Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Now, I will say this, several years ago, when I did the wage study, one of the questions that came up was what was more important, the benefits on the health side or a pay raise of your wages and salary? And at that time, over 50%, 53% of the employees of Bourbon County said the wages were more important than the health benefits, so, and I can dig that information up if anybody wants to see that. And I'm one of those, and that 53%, I'll admit that, better wage for employees more important, if they need supplemental type insurance or something like that, we can leave it on them to make that decision to go get that information themselves.
You think some of that decision was because they've never experienced bad health insurance in a few years? Just a question, I don't know, there is bad health insurance out there.
My wife and I talked about this, and honestly, we're not happy with my health insurance. I mean.
Susan, do you have a different health insurance carrier at the city?
We do.
How do you, what do you feel like compares?
I think, well, your health insurance covers a whole lot more than what ours does at the city. We actually are through a consortium through Green Bush. In my previous experience, I was the benefits director down at an organization in Pittsburgh, and we worked with brokers a lot to help us identify what the best solution was, and of course, they get a commission off of that, that's how they get paid. So if this is something you're entertaining, you know, you probably ought to research your brokers to determine what's the best fit for your organization. And because insurance is not apples to apples, you definitely want to have a broker involved to help you identify what kind of insurance you're getting, so.
Well, this will give us the process to start then, since Kendall.
Absolutely.
When is, when would these bids be due?
I don't know when they're going to happen due, but our insurance will expire at the end of this year.
End of this year?
Okay, so this is a process, yeah.
Okay, so it'd be more likely it'd have to be sometime in August?
Yeah, if you're going to go through a broker process, you need to start it now, so that you can identify what broker you're going to use. And when I talk about commission, how their commission is paid, the county's not paying that commission, it's when they identify the healthcare provider and then that healthcare provider pays them directly, that's, they get their commission off of your premiums.
Well, then it's, it gives us to get it out there as soon as possible to have the information back to us in time and manner.
Yep, and I can help whoever sends that out, I can help you with that.
You can work with Kendall, try to get that done. Okay, great, thanks, Susan.
Like I said, this group that came here back in 2018, they do work with companies, government entities here in Kansas, as a matter of fact, they've been here to serve all local businesses here in Fort Scott and at Popper Dam and also in Nevada area, so I think it'd be kind of, sit back and look to see what they have to offer. If I didn't trust them or believe in them, I don't think I would be here standing in front of you today, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, sorry, sure. Suit you gave one of these to Susan.
Did I give one to Susan?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I did. She got my last one.
Perfect.
Hi, Shane needs to be here.
I think he was.
Shane Walker.
Hello, Mr. Ben. Can't hear me, can't hear you. They don't want that one.
As of right now, Case Nate, she's been admitted to architecture school. No, 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 no. She doesn't, and their program's pretty unique, and it allows the kids to, the first year, they're exposed to all six or seven of the different disciplines. It's unbelievable, I mean, it's, you're, the minute you step on. It's unbelievable, I mean, it's, you're, the minute you step on campus, you're in that program. It's not like some of these colleges that make you take a bunch of. Yeah, no, this one is, you're in the program and you're out in five years for the masters.
Shane cannot be here, it's for dispatch, right?
Right, this is for dispatch, okay, well, we can, we can have a short discussion about it, it's no big deal, I know that. What's that?
The city.
The city just approved it, they asked commissioning.
Right, I had a, I had a call where I had an invitation from Jeremy to take a tour of the courthouse at 11 o'clock. So I need to bring that by, get an okay to do that.
I make a motion that.
Hang on, I couldn't hear you and Kendall couldn't either.
So Jeremy Fraser.
Okay.
Had requested to have a walk-through of the courthouse at 11 o'clock today.
Oh, Jeremy said.
I'll make the motion to allow Lynn to accompany Jeremy Fraser, the city manager, on a guided tour of the courthouse today at 11 o'clock.
Very good, thank you very much.
I second.
So, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question carries. Oh, Jeremy Fraser, the new city manager, is just coming over to have a tour of the courthouse. Where's Laura? Laura Aldrich.
Have you guys already talked about dispatch already?
Well, Shane's not here, so we're not talking about it.
Laura, yeah.
He beat a man.
I'll go get Laura, we talked yesterday.
Okay.
We talked yesterday. Oh, she wants to go paperwork. Fun stuff.
Do you want me to talk about dispatch?
No.
We don't need to.
Shane's the guy that's involved, Ned, I need him here. He can't be here right now.
Can you tell us about it or?
The only thing that I can. I can tell you that the city approved the move and so we've been working together to organize that. I think they're back there painting and installing some walls and things like that.
I know Shane's got the, got the footprint on what's going on and had a lot of information, so I thought he'd probably be key in the discussion.
Yeah, and it's gonna be, once it happens, it's gonna be a really quick move because they can't have any time down from dispatch, so.
Are we trading space for funds, is that what we're doing?
Right now, we're, that's still under discussion, so, you know, if that's something that we need, we probably need to discuss as a group, maybe when you guys have your next work session.
Let's, let's just have a little discussion about that.
Okay.
Do you know what the budget for, for dispatch is?
Our budget?
Yes.
Oh, no, I can't say off the top of my head. I do know that the county pays roughly $50,000 for us to dispatch for them, so that would probably be where we would maybe make some.
Well, that's where we, that's the money we get from the state for, for the 911 service.
Right, yeah.
Okay, and, you know, we use those dollars when we're, when we're talking about our asphalt, when we get our asphalt from you. We just bill less on that when we start talking about asphalt EMS and the dispatch. Those are the two things that we kind of share, share services on.
That'd be an interesting thing, you get those figures together for us to share them.
Yeah.
Great.
Yep.
Laura.
Yes, sir. Justin has one of the other maps he found.
So for you, for those of you that, that, that's not the speed with what Laura's done. I think she'd been back from 1950 on with looking at the road. Official roadmap to figure out what's going on and what's open and what's closed.
I can't find the.
I know, but there's no way that we can't, we have to, we have to print it, there's no option.
Which, what year is this one?
This one's an 80.
80s?
It says it over there.
83.
83, it was a revised map in 83.
Okay.
By KDOT?
No, this is during the reappraisals.
Reappraisal.
There's the one, one of them.
There's the one we've been talking about?
Yep.
It's not closed.
Well, it is closed.
Close here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And where's the other one?
The other one is, I don't have my numbers. I just found it right before I came up here, so, and I believe this one is the other one. Because it's between 12 and 13. So, it is.
Okay.
One of those miles.
Oh, right there. All right.
I don't know if that, if it's a driveway or if it is, it looks like the road.
Yes. Oh, it is a red.
It is, but the other one here. Depending on which one, and I just found this, so I didn't get a chance to.
That's the map we've been talking about, sure.
But we've been looking for this, we've been looking for this forever.
Here we go. Another one that was in question was, right here, see this, this road right here? Can you tell me what that indication tells me? A very low-maintained road or what?
Well, the question is for me is, this is the 83 map, or will they research through your department if that's closed or open before they did this map, or did they just do the map from the area?
I didn't, yeah, I didn't have, these were not in my office at that time, they were in actual your office at the time.
KDOT would have did an arrow, they wouldn't have done a lot of research probably.
And it was during a reappraisal through the appraiser's office, and that's what I've been looking through is the reappraisal staff.
So, we don't know this accurate until you tell us, each one of them, that you researched a little bit or, we can't assume.
This should be, this should be the latest reappraisal map.
Okay.
Through the company that the appraiser's office hired to do reappraisals.
Okay, but would they have researched, road closed or open at that time through you? Or someone?
If they would have went through road and bridge, through the, through where the road record maps were, maybe, but I'm looking through Kendall's.
Let me ask you a question, so they went in and reappraised them, so they had to look at all the, all the rightaways? They wanted to reappraise them to make sure that, that the rightaways matched property, correct?
I'm assuming. But I just found this this morning, I was coming in, because I have a road closing, while I'm looking for all this stuff back in 2013 that was never sent to my office for vacation. And I just want to know if we can just take it out of this book, Kendall? And you guys, you guys are not the commissioners, it's already signed by the commissioners? And take it out of this book, even though it's 2013? And put it of record? Because it's, it is a resolution vacating part of a road, but it was never.
Never posted.
It was never put in my. It was never put in my office. So therefore, anybody doing any research on these two sections would never have.
Some of the scenarios that came up yesterday was that we didn't have the resolution and so we thought, without the resolution, we'd have to start from the beginning and I think legally would make more sense. But with the resolution, I think that we won't have to start from the beginning and probably could just put that, because it's already been voted on and approved by a prior commission, so.
So it just needs to flow through?
It becomes law, I mean, I mean, I'm not saying it's as strong as the law, but it definitely has been approved by a prior commission. We'll, we'll check with the state to make absolute sure.
Okay, very good.
Shouldn't happen. So we gotta get, we gotta make sure we're right.
And myself, I mean, as long as you're comfortable, Laura. I would not be comfortable with this map being accurate, but if you tell us it's the best we're gonna get, I'm okay with that.
That's the last time the reappraisals were done and I did find 911 maps. And I was going to request that maybe we have a road work session with Eric and maybe one of the commissioners or all the commissioners, however you guys want to do it, because this map, just glancing at that, that particular one is lining up with the 911, which they started in, in 1990 and it became official in, in 2000s. That I did find the 911 maps, digging through, spent about two hours digging through closets that I have up here now, that, that, that particular one and the other one that we were looking at is matching up.
Right, so, one of the things I noticed.
Not according to my road records, so if the reappraisal and the 911 never got transferred over to the actual road records, which I didn't have them at that time.
Okay, I see.
That we need to decide if we're going off of the reappraisal and the 911, if those match, then we need to make a decision on what you guys are gonna.
Laura's doing an extraordinary amount of work with regards to this. I mean, the other thing that she's gonna, we talked about yesterday was, is that she's gonna go back through and look at the 80, now that we have the year, we know that we can go back in 83 and find out when the hearings happened, you know, find the minutes to where the community was invited in, have their, their say, that type of thing. So, that's our, I think that's probably our last step and then at that point, we could take the two maps that we have from the 83 and the 1999 that we looked at yesterday and basically say, this is, this is what was done. You know, 20, now it's been almost 30 years ago, makes Commissioner Beth and I older than we once were. High school graduations, creepy, oh, I missed her silvers, but you know. We're getting older. But after this last step, I think we're gonna be able to solve this problem.
Good.
We do have one, we met yesterday, we do have one still that is an anomaly that we've been working on now for almost nine months and it, we're still gonna try to figure it out, we gotta find some minutes. We've been given documents by a private citizen that show certain things happened with the prior commission and it didn't flow through to her office, this was, you know, way back in the 90s, so we've got some, in 2000s, so we've got some things we're still working on with that. And I got some procedural questions and I'm gonna have to call the Kansas administrative people and find out how you deal with something that occurred that wasn't quite recorded correctly.
And I also have a question, going forward, if we was to close or open a road today, have we fixed the information?
Yeah, Kendall's office is awesome at that with vacating and opening roads, I mean, she's got the procedures down, she, she tells the people.
Right, once, once they go through their process through Kendall, then Kendall brings them to me and then.
Now, the interesting thing that could occur with a road meeting that you're planning, I think you should have, there are roads that are in our county that probably should be vacated, that the commissioner wouldn't make that decision and they could actually formally request that those roads get, and that's something that we can ask the community, I mean, are there roads? I mean, we know some, you brought up TNC, we know there's some roads out there that they would love to have vacated and maybe that's a possibility to save tax dollars, especially if it's a low-use road or a low-maintenance road and isn't needed.
There is a procedure for vacating them, for coming in and hold a landowner sign off on them and act a petition for the roads to be closed?
Yeah, yes, there is, and what I'm saying is, is the commission can maybe reach out and find out if there's landowners out there that wouldn't want their roads vacated at this time because we're trying to not have as many gravel roads in our county to save tax dollars. That's something we've been talking about when Jim was road and bridge director, we talked about this a lot, trying to get our inventory down to a manageable level.
Because we used to find one that was vacated, you know, it's going east and west, but there's a road that's going north and south that's never been vacated. Well, if the road east and west is vacated, why, why not go ahead and vacate that, that north-south road? Because.
Can't get to it.
We, we vacated it and the landowner has made that part of his personal driveway, so, you know, to him, I mean, we're not, we're not maintaining it because it's now his personal driveway, he has, he has, as far as, from what I've been told, he has a gate up going into his personal property, so, but that road's never been properly vacated from back in the 1800s. But the east-west road has been.
One of the things also that we're talking and I just wanted to bring it up and I've, I've had this little bit of discussion before, there, since Laura's taken on this responsibility for, for keeping our road records, and it's quite time-consuming. There's a disparity between the pay for the registered deeds, the county treasurer and the county clerk. The county treasurer and the county clerk make $47,248.24 a year. The registered deeds makes $44,821.60 a year. I would think it would behoove us to, to raise her pay to be comparable with the other two departments.
I agree, Lynn, what was the amount of the clerks?
It's actually, it's, I got the figure here, it's actually a $2,426.58 difference a year. So I'd entertain a motion to, to raise her wages to that.
Okay, I would make a motion to increase Bourbon County Register Deeds pay at $2,426.68 a year.
That makes it $47,248.24.
Okay.
Go ahead, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you for your work, sir.
And would you entertain the idea, just think about it, doing a, with Eric, kind of looking at this map and comparing it to the 911 map and maybe.
So what I think is, maybe.
At least settling the two that we know that are, are talking about or, or.
Would you mind having just a little sit down with Eric and kind of go through those two maps so he'd be familiar with them? Then let's have a, have a work session?
Yes.
Might make it a little easier.
Yeah, anytime you're available, I've got the 911 maps laid out in room 10, because they were all rolled up really tight.
Okay.
And so I'll do this so we can be laid out and so we don't rip it or anything.
We've been looking for that reappraisal map for a long time.
Yes, I have, and nobody seemed to know where, knew where that one was, but I did find the 911 map and then I found this one this morning.
Great.
So, I will get that done and you'll get back with me on what to do with this one. Take it out.
So moving forward.
And Kendall's been great, I've been pulling books from her for, about every, every week I go in and get several books from her office and her book's been great.
Lynn, going forward, I guess the plan is to have a couple, several work sessions or as many as we need to have. Then once we identify everything we have, then we have a public hearing to invite the public, we can discuss each project with the public and notify the ones that we're looking at.
I think you, I think you kill a couple of birds. I think you, I think you kill a couple of birds with one stone and talk about taking a maintained road and going low maintenance even. Not necessarily vacating it, but saying, hey, landowners, this road's used by X, Y, and Z. And to save tax dollars, we're going to, we're going to make this a low maintenance road. Instead of, instead of closing it.
Turn it into the field roads around my house?
Yeah. There's some up in your neck of the woods that the county owns that are, I would say a field road. But just saying that it's a low maintenance road is important for, for, you know, ten years from now, you know, we'll have another road and bridge director. I mean, it's just, we got to get things that are consistent so when time passes, we have consistency. Because that's what this is, is a.
I'll guarantee you, those roads you're talking about, when you get in low maintenance.
Right.
Is where all the four wheel trucks go to try them out.
Right. What I'm saying is, is that none of us were here in nineteen eighty three. We were all alive, but we weren't working here. And so that we have a nineteen eighty three problem that if we had some kind of.
Maybe with the work sessions, we can get it straightened out. And now with Laura in charge of, of the road records, we can keep it maintained.
Right. And it also will let the road and bridge director in the future know that's a low maintenance road.
Yes.
Instead of having the argument, is it open? It's not, I mean, I know that drove Jim crazy. Is this road open or not open? I mean, it's.
Well, he was, he was going off a nine one one map.
Right.
And then everyone else was going off a different map.
Right.
We just got to make sure that we fix it. And the future public works director or commissioners, they know what they have.
Right, exactly.
We can do that.
And we're working on that.
We can fix it.
Yeah, we can.
County councillor, you're up.
I'm going to, Susan's listening, I don't know if she's here. We need to have a meeting sooner than later about the multi-county health board. I would request that Commissioner Beth, Susan and I actually are able to sit internally and have some discussions. And then if need be, Commissioner Beth could go out and be the liaison with multi-county health board. And then also with any, anyone else that we need to talk to about that issue. Because we have a time clock that started and we need to make sure that the commission is on the up and up. And we're getting the commission's wishes with regards to that service that you're paying for.
I would entertain a motion to allow Mr. Beth to be the liaison between the multi-county health board and county.
Okay. I'll make that motion that Commissioner Beth be the liaison for Bourbon County Commissioners, meeting with Justin and Susan and the Southeast Kansas Health Department Board to discuss our future plans.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Most curious.
Commissioner Beth is probably super excited about that. He's like, great, more work, more work. Commissioner Harrison, myself, along with a contingent from the city, is going to be going up to, to look at a meatpacking plant up in Spring Hill on Friday. That meeting will be at nine AM. We'll all be leaving, you know, Bourbon County around seven thirty, seven forty five. I don't know how long that tour will be, but we're going to literally do the smell test. I mean, literally. So we're going to go up there and have that interaction with them and see how it goes. So just giving you guys the heads up that that's been coordinated and will be on the agenda for Friday. I do ask that we go into executive session for fifteen minutes. I ask under KSA seventy five, forty three, nineteen, B two, attorney client privilege. The topic that we're going to be discussing is possible litigation. We'll leave this room and go to, I guess, the executive session room. But I do need fifteen minutes.
I entertain a motion.
I'd make the motion. Can I just say, as stated by councillor Meeks?
What time to come back?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. So ten hosts, let's go ten oh eight.
Ten oh eight.
Perfect.
Second?
Aye, second, I motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Most curious.
I, what, what, I guess?
I have to just.
I hate to be sorry.
I'm not fully educated in all of their due to the talks. I think it's, I know what it is.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
So, negotiations are not bringing at all. They are being resourced and provide some grants and things like that. Again, they're, they're a direction to, like, you know, be able to say, okay, let's get these folks on the pump and see how they develop. Let's, you know, so.
Right.
I think about that. So it would be something that when there is a Bourbon County economic, Bourbon County economic, that person in meeting with you or I or any other business potential risk to any or existence in his day knows who, where, when, and how to contact them and get with them to get that asset to benefit the community.
So I guess.
But I don't know how much they pay and what they get in benefits.
Right.
So.
Well, it sounds like especially. Especially since, you know, coming into community. I don't know. I, I guess I just would be very.
We probably should look and see what, what, what is one that. Is that one of the reasonable economic?
Well, no, this has more to do with. This is the revolving loan.
We are a member of.
Are you not a resident of the regional plan? No, I was, I was. But again. And I guess my question would be, is there access forms that would then to counties, cities in our county? Why can't our entities that come, city folks also access those same loans rather than, I don't know.
All right. Well, first of all, there is no.
We do, we can.
Yeah.
They, they are an organization that help us administer grants a lot of times. Because a lot of times we're looking at C D G funds. They're very focused on low income. And so in order to get these types of loans, you have to meet that LMI, low modern income. And they're very difficult to even qualify for. So they probably have the exact same type of loan that we have that we haven't been able to even get out to our businesses because they didn't qualify, they don't have businesses that qualify.
So they, so the hope is, I mean, my hope would be that they would fulfill a role with a little bit different. Than say a BPO or.
And they do, they help us. They help both entities actually.
Okay, okay.
With the administration of our grants.
With the administration.
And they help us.
Sure. And they give the application and administration.
Okay.
Because they should be more of an expert than a local technical person. Because this is what they should do and focus on.
For example, we're getting ready to possibly go out for a wastewater grant through the state. And they will be the ones that will help us write that grant because they, they have huge success in writing those grants.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so, but a lot of times with the grants, you have to have everything engineered. Everything has to be done ahead of time before you can even go for a grant.
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, okay. Well, that was just. Good.
Sorry, I didn't mean to butt in.
No, no, no. Okay.
You were hoping.
Shared services working together.
Yes, yes. Well, they just want to understand me because eventually that will come up, not that I'm able to answer the question.
But you have to be able to work together. Oh, you're snapping on my toes?
No, that's not, that's about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right. All right.
Okay.
And, and that's exactly what I was just talking about. In order to even qualify for these, you have to have all the engineering in it. And that is the piece that will miss. So once we get that done, then we can go out with the same type of grants.
Oh, I haven't seen it. And the last piece in my head was, and this is out, that's not. Right here. And that's a big tree. Here in county, it's ours. And this has a little homestead. If they had somebody to see that a lone person helped them fill this out. I would like you to do homesteads. That Iowa gets a new roof for free to the lease. Like they committed to moving. And it would help a lot of the poor people around here. They had people, they just said, you know, that how much is homesteads? Too many. You know, you have to help to do that for the lady.
And I think we just put immigration on our website.
But you did. Don't you hurt and help you. Turn it. Yeah. That, that's true. I mean, I keep on thinking, I mean, everything stands for the dog. And when I go to Pittsburgh, as soon as I get back to the office. I will get that together. Well, thank you. I'm really slow with my password and I'm trying to think.
Thank you for walking back and forth.
Maybe the message got out for the first week, but it didn't, no one was thinking that we're still going. Because we had canceled very fortunate because it snowed.
All right.
So. Well, it's a waiting process, so it could be five, it could be six, it depends on the cycle. So this year, with the exception of the, we were going to do five. So we had to cancel the one, so there's two more. We've done two, we're going to do two more.
Okay.
So this Friday and next Friday. You know, it is different than it has been in previous years where we were doing drive through only. It's really simple.
Really simple.
No, that's.
Unintentionally.
No, 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 no. No, like, hey, there's a lot going on in, believe it or not, little old Bourbon County. There's a lot of things going on.
And people say nothing's going on.
Well, yes, but usually, I mean, my experience before was that was pretty much the youthful people thinking there's nothing going on.
Yeah, what's there to do?
Yes, yeah.
And that's still somewhat of an issue. I.
Oh, yeah, well, you know, I lived in LA, but people would say nothing's going on. I lived in LA, gee, there's nothing to do. I mean, it's a, it's a societal thing, and so.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I just think that's the, you know what?
But I do think we're moving forward on a lot of levels and a lot of.
Yes.
To hopefully address and answer some, some of those things across the board, you know, no matter what you want to bring up.
How do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And so you just have to be optimistic.
Yes.
Working. I am so pleased with the progress that's gone on in the last year and a half.
Yes.
Very slow.
I agree.
Very minimal, but these little steps are, are great progression to where we need to be in my opinion.
Yes.
Or I'd like to see us be in the future about sharing services and working more closely together. The bottom line is to save citizens of Bourbon County money.
Yep.
And to be more.
Yep.
And they think a lot of things slow and you ran into hospital closure. You know, and then COVID, obviously.
Yep.
Maybe roadblocks.
Yeah.
How are you, Mark?
Good. You know, the hospital closing, the dialysis center closing. I mean, now you, again, you're back to the Pittsburgh, you have to take care of those services and that's.
Well, you look at the hospital closure.
Yeah.
And my brother is a medical doctor in a small town in Belleville. He is. And it's even half the size of Fort Scott. Now, guess what Belleville has? They have a hospital. And bottom line is, it's just my opinion. In Belleville, they subsidize the hospital at one million a year. Guess what they subsidize one and a half on account? A million a year. It's going to cost you money.
Yes.
And the second portion of that comes to, all right. My brother, when he first went out there, he didn't really care. And when he first went out there, he's the only game in town. He went out, what, big or thanksgiving or something like that? Guess who greeted him? The mayor.
Yeah.
Real estate agents.
Yeah.
Anybody that was important showed up.
They opened schools.
And then a little later on, they built him one point two million dollars. Him and another doctor, a nice brick building out there that they leased from him. You know what I'm saying? But if you don't have the support to do that, guess what? You're not going to have it.
Well, okay, so again, my opinion of what took place from the time they announced the hospital closing was the community was in a state of panic.
Okay.
The city was grasping at things that they thought that they could or should or needed or. And forget, forget the people in charge. It's not about the people in charge, it's about the actions that take place, took place, need to continue to take place. You know, get over the blame, get, get over the shock. Now, what should we do as a community? And that is, is to go out and seek a future hospital entity that wishes to be in Bourbon County in what shape and form. We, hospitals change, they have changed all over the country, closing all the time in the country for multiple reasons. But obviously in small towns, the entities are, are a different set of circumstances than they are in Southern California where I used to live, where three hospitals closed. And that's a broad area when you say Southern California. I'm talking about El Segundo here. You know, why would a hospital close within a one mile, I'm sorry, within a five mile area? There's two and a half million people. Well. Well, the problem is funding, okay? You cannot have an emergency room open twenty four seven that has five hundred people in the waiting room. The reason I know this is because family members dying and me basically living in the hospital for weeks. And, and you have to go through police officers to enter into the hospital. You have to have an ID, have that person living in the hospital. This is, you know, way pre-COVID. And the way you enter after six PM or before seven AM is through the emergency room. And, and there were bodies to bodies to bodies in there on the ground. Every concealed area outside, blankets. You know, there are hundreds of thousands of intigent. You can call them wherever you want. When we were little kids, you'd say, that was a bum. You know, a street person, whatever you want to call them. And, and they have, they have other issues because they have huge migration. Okay, well, here, can we afford to have a hospital waiting in? My personal opinion is no. But a micro, we're talking about a micro meat processor, a micro hospital. Six to eight days. Outpatient surgery, medical doctors there, x-ray, you know, the things that are, are good, solid basics that you can render assistance to a person. And if not, you can lifeflight them or helicopter them to a major hospital within, by lifeflight, I mean, by air, in fifteen, twenty minutes, get you. But I mean, thank heavens I haven't had to experience it. I don't know how long it takes to go up to KU or.
And here's, here's what I would tell you. They actually did a survey, and we're talking about LA and some places, but yes, they, they made different surveys on cities. And they talked about why, and you're talking about economic development. And why do people take and, and take, locate someplace? And one of the first ones is, is what kind of medical facility it is and reason why. Because, okay, young people come here and if you want to live here. And if you have a baby, they got to go straight up. They, they got, you know, you're, you're putting additional strain on their budget because they do not have access to healthcare, you know, this and that and the other. And, and so why would I want to take a living in Fort Scott, Michael, completely, and have access to medical? Tell me, say, good road and park. Move. Do you think you've got basic necessities that, that are, that you have?
Well, I move, I move to come out of an executive session at ten oh eight.
Second, action, no action?
No action. I move that we resume our normal meeting.
Back in this room.
Back in this room.
Second, that also.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious. All right. Public, the comments.
I have a, a couple, yeah, I never speak very often, but only when I think it might be important and hope you hear me well. I'm going to give this to, by the way, this is the Fort Scott Tribune, that's where I'm getting my information from, and I was wondering, this is a KODOT cost share program applications being accepted. They're a 90, 10% grant, it gives you a whole list of things of what they can go for. There's a webinar on this on Friday at 11:00 AM, and that's to give you the information to take and apply for these grants. And it's not just for the county, it's for cities too. And then you have until April the 12th to go ahead and submit for that. And it would behoove us in Bourbon County, in my opinion, if we had a professional, just a grant writer, because in this magazine here, which is the Iowa Register, it shows towns of similar sizes getting grants for sewer, wastewater, 600, 500, 400,000, and there's eight or 10 of them that do that. I mean, if you have somebody to do your grants, and last but not least, and this is a more of a city issue, well, I can't say that. I didn't know that LEAP would give you a new roof, and it happened, and the lady at Iowa got one, they come in and normally do your insulation and stuff, they're for low-income people. And if the county or the city had a go-to person, like they do the homestead tax, to help older people fill those applications out, maybe it would help with the blight in our cities. And that's all I want to say, passing on the information that I see. Thank you.
Thanks, Claire.
Never mind. Yeah, as you all know, last week was really tense, and so I'm here today to apologize for my attitude, how I came across. I've desired all along to be heard, and when someone gets up and they're angry and, you know, potentially name calls, you know, people stop listening. And so, I disappointed myself, I want to continue to be heard, and in order to do that, you know, I know I have to keep my emotions under control, you know, we all have passions, but I have to figure out how to communicate effectively so I can continue to be heard. I also spoke with Jeff Spangler and offered an apology to him. So, again, I'm sorry for my own professional behavior and I will endeavor to do better in the future. Thank you, guys, for what you do.
Thanks, Ann.
You are working hard. I've told several people on, on numerous occasions that within the county and the city, I see good things. Is it slow? Are there things that we have to back up and clean up? Yes, but you're doing that, and I see good things for our county and for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Commissioners, you got anything?
Nope, we got another.
Sorry, Mark, I didn't see, I didn't see you sneak out of the, out of the side of there, over there. Thank you, sir.
I'll wear brighter colors next time.
Well, yeah, you blend it in with the green.
Yes, okay, well, good morning, my name is Mark McCoy, citizen, and I have two points I'd like to bring up today.
Okay.
The first point is, you discussed a little bit earlier about Clifton working with SCK Multi-County Health Department with regards to benefiting the county. Just, just an update, I am the vice chairman for the SCK Multi-County Health Department Board, and if I can liaison with Clifton or you folks in any way, please allow me to do that. Number two, Business Best Practices says that you should bid your contracts every year or every other year. I learned this through being a business owner for 20 years, and just a brief, with three restaurants, I, in the beginning, I did not bid every year my health insurance, my EPLI insurance, my fire theft and casualty insurance, my cyber insurance, and one or two others. And, and so, towards the middle of my career, I was amazed to see the bidding be as much as $30,000 higher than the lowest bid. I didn't always go with the lowest bid, but I believe it was really important, brought up earlier by Susan, apples to apples. So, it'd be really important for you folks, whoever this entity, this individual is, to determine what are the specific basics you want and or need in regards to health insurance with your existing plan and, and to work with this broker, because they're going to make money, and the only way they can make, make money is by you purchasing a plan through them.
Correct.
So, as a businessperson, I encourage you, the county, to do your due diligence to help save us citizens our, our money and to benefit you as best you can. That, that's it, thank you so much.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, now we can move on to commissioners.
Kendall waving her hand over.
Oh, you got something, Kendall.
I sent you all an email, we have the election canvas Thursday at 10:00.
Yes, yes.
Jim had something he wanted to mention on that. We have four ballots, the election results will not change, but we still need you to the canvas. We have four ballots, I'm saying 10 minutes tops, I was going to take this on Thursday, but I have to advertise well ahead of today.
Okay.
We're going to have this canvas, and so it is scheduled for Thursday at 10:00.
I know, I would request that Ashley Sheldon represent me at the canvas.
Can I request you to represent me?
You won't get a second on that, no second.
That's fine.
Yeah.
You can do that.
Okay. Clifton?
Thursday at 10:00.
Right now, I think I am.
See what I got here?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Well, as a commission comment, I just want to share with you, I'm going to be making some meetings as a grandfather with other, with city leaders and school leaders. It's my personal opinion as a grandpa that we need another resource officer in Fort Scott. I advise you that this, that I'm going as a citizen, because you probably hear that I'm out there, I'm not asking, go as a commission, I just want you to know I'm not freelancing it, and I don't know if it's going to go anywhere, but a few months ago, it came up with a police chief and it came up with the mayor. So, I don't see how one resource officer is covering four schools in Fort Scott. So, I'd like to start that movement and come back sometime in the future and ask your permission as a commissioner to start having those meetings if I go forward as a grandfather, so, just to let you know what I'm doing.
Okay. Clifton, you got anything?
I just would comment on Ann, I didn't take any offense to anything you said last week.
I didn't either.
I didn't even, I didn't even think that badly. So, I would, I truly. I, I appreciate the apology, but it was certainly not warranted, I don't think.
Didn't offend me at all, so.
Kind of, I'm kind of like you, Clifton, Mark, I kind of looked at her and said, what did I miss?
I also appreciate the fact that you realize that we are trying, and nothing's going to happen very quick. These are problems that are age-old, and we are trying to go in a good direction, and I hope it's the right one. So, I appreciate that.
I think all I have is, I appreciate Clint bringing, bringing that KDOT up. We go through this about every year for the granting process on the KDOT, and we do, we do, if it's, if it's feasible, we do put in for those, those, that money at the state level, man, and federal level. I'll make sure that Eric knows.
Yeah. And those grants are very misleading at times, they're calling 90/10, but you got to pay architecture, engineering fees, you got to pay right-of-way fees, that cost keeps going, it's really more of a 60/40.
Right.
And on a $2 million bridge, that's a lot of money. I've never seen it really ever come out 90/10, have you, Susan? You shaking your head, no?
Ann, we've applied the last three rounds and haven't gotten anything.
Yeah, and if, if it doesn't fall just right, it'll be 50/50 real quick.
And then I know, I know we checked it out very thoroughly.
Yeah, we have.
When we looked at the bridge up north and, and it, and a $1 million bridge is going to cost us about a million eight.
Yeah. That's all I have, Lynn. Susan, anything?
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
Make a motion that we adjourn for the day.
I hear a second.
Second to motion.
On favor?
Hi.
Sergeant Harris.
Don't get out early.